Start this regular council meeting of Monday, November first, 2021.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberated, just as for all.
Okay. We're gonna have a really short meeting, but Leslie and I liked it enough. All right, we'll call please.
Mayor Laughlin, Councilperson Sexton, Miller, Goodweiler, Stulman, and Tom Dean is absent.
All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda first thing. To move, Nick Colton, seconds. Let's vote on that, please. I doubt the motion.
I should probably start saying stuff instead of just raising.
Like catching you out.
Okay, so you got the motion?
Yes.
Okay, Councilperson Goodweiler, Miller, Sexton, Stulman?
Okay, the consent agenda consists of the minutes from October eighteenth, the last council meeting. Approve Kyle Ty singer as a fire cadet with the West Branch Fire Department. Approve a special events permit for Christmas past submitted by the West Branch CDG. We have the claims and August monthly financials. Give me motion somewhat. That's a Jody. Second, second son, okay. The discussion.
I had a quick question.
Yeah.
There's a reason why we have to approve. Fire. That's. It's not something they can just handle internally. I know, I was just curious.
Yeah, we always have. Is it an appointment by, is it an appointment by me?
No, it's not an appointment, but there is, they are covered under our insurance or I'm sorry, they're not covered for by our insurance. So we do have a form that they fill out. It's the terms of insurance coverage for injury program and it just has a release from the parents saying that if there's an injury that they'll submit it to their insurance first before this is any additional, so.
Needs a resolution.
Just curious.
I have a question about someone's claims. Johnson County Refugee Trash Cart Swap Out $16,000.
What is that about?
Wrong description. There's a, there's a $30 charge for cart swaps and this goes back to when Heidi does her, well, she can explain it how, whatever. It pulls a description. It may not be the actual description, but there was probably just the regular cart fees plus a sub cart swap. There's been like one, there's been like three people in the last month, three people, each three months, one person has swapped out and there's a $30 cart swap. So we, I bill them, they pay us, we pay just kind of.
Yeah, but this is way more than that.
Right, but that includes a regular trash cart collection, the trash collection piece, fourteen seventy-five, twelve seventy-five, four seventy-five. That's what, that's, that's about the monthly cost.
Any other comments on the consent agenda? Go ahead.
We talked as a staff this morning about the Christmas past permit and we noticed that on, on there it had that the public works department would be collecting and changing up trashes during the event. I discussed this with everybody this morning and I talked with Jesse also, we'd like it to be changed before we agree to it. That will put extra trash, they'll look at them on Friday, they'll empty them on Friday, but they're not planning, they're like overflowing. But we'd like to put extra trash cans on.
Instead of someone coming in especially.
Well, there won't be overtime.
Correct.
Got it.
Thank you, Melissa.
So do we need to amend that?
There's a section on the last page where it gets our, all of our approvals. A note section and I've written on the note section, public works will provide extra trash cans for the event. There'll be no event pickup until the morning on call time, people will go out and then they'll finish the cleanup on Monday during regular hours.
Good.
Yeah, it's, it'll get communicated. It already has. Okay. Any other comments, consent agenda? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Stulman, Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yeah.
Sexton?
Yes.
All right, communication's open forum. If anyone would like to address the council, this is the time. Anyone here to address the council online or live? Hearing none, we will move on. Second reading of ordinance seven eighty-four rezoning. Property generally located north of East Main Street and west of and adjacent to North Fourth Street. From an industrial district. To a PUD, Planned Unit Development District. This is our second reading, motion.
To move, Colton.
Yeah. Discussion?
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler? Stulman?
Yes.
Yes.
Third reading of ordinance seven eighty-three amending all train vehicle. And then in, many chapter seventy-five. To include all train vehicles and snowmobiles, motion please. That's a no. Joey. Third and final reading. Comments? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler? Stulman?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
All right, that will become an ordinance. Thank you. Chief. Chief Torrey for doing that. I almost said chief or a hand. Resolution twenty forty-three approving and accepting certain municipal public improvements constructed in Lothian Ridge Estates. Motion please.
To move.
Jody?
I didn't understand.
Understand what?
When we do the subdivision agreement. The agreement puts a lien on all the properties until all the improvements are done. So they had escrow agreement or escrow letter credit for some of it. So basically this releases the rest of the lots from, so that you can sell the lots, except that this, they have to get a sidewalk release because you don't put the sidewalks until, they don't give the sidewalks till after the house is built because you just destroy it anyways if you put it in now. So this just allows them to sell it and then everybody knows when they get an occupancy permit, they also get a sidewalk release.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
In this subdividers agreement, what had we decided we were doing with mailboxes or all mailboxes now, cluster mailboxes?
Yes.
Okay, there's no cluster mailboxes up right now. At least I'm not seeing.
There's a spot for them.
I don't care if there's a spot.
Near the detention base.
Isn't it up in detention basin?
They're not up.
I thought I saw them.
Matt or Dave, are you on?
I think that actually says cluster mailboxes in the subdivision agreement if I remember correctly off the top of my head.
I thought they're on the east end off of Gilbert.
Good. You're sure they're there?
Unless I'm imagining it, but that's where, that's where I thought they were. I can check in the morning, but I'm pretty sure they're out there.
Good.
Well, I can, I'll not send this for the recording until we can confirm that. There are two homes that are sold. One has a closing date of the tenth, the other one I don't have a date yet, but I've been told twice.
We're not making that mailbox mistake anymore.
So.
There's also a big, big tree trunk.
That. There's three trucks that's gonna get removed by lynchings on that intention basis.
It'll get removed. I've been assured. Make sure.
All right.
Okay. I got a motion in a second. Any other comments to accept the public improvements? Of Lothian Ridge. Hearing none, let's vote please, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yeah.
Okay, Main Street Program. Resolution twenty forty-four, support and financial commitment for the Main Street Program, West Branch Iowa move to action. I do have a comment before we get a motion that in the actual resolution. There is no dollar amount listed.
Right.
I would like to put in a dollar amount. Right. Can I do that? How can I do that?
You have to amend the resolution first to include a dollar amount.
So should I just take the motion?
So what do you want it for half an amount?
We've always been giving $10,000. However. And then every year they come, they ask us for another three, two or three for the carriage rides. I was gonna propose. We commit $13,000. In this. Letter of support, financial. Support and city support and then they wouldn't have to come and ask for us for the carriage ride money every year.
They're an excellent.
For the carriage ride money.
So here's the problem I have with that. Is that what if they don't have that in their budget when it comes time and then. Then they're still gonna come to us and then we're gonna have to beat the balls and say no.
What would they come to us for it? Um. Well, I'd like to up their support period. This is my. Guess it's my. Compromise to up their support. And they don't have to come to us. Every winter before the carriage rides. That's what, what to your comment is, what if they don't do the carriage rides?
Yeah.
Roger, this is Heidi.
Hi Heidi.
Hi, I just also wanted to remind you what we talked about this morning about the hotel motel tax. And you know that, that, that was gonna be providing financial. Assistance and we needed to be half of what that year, what that is on a yearly rate, so. Ten thousand, I think is good for now and then we can discuss at a later date the extra three thousand dollars.
So that other, that extra $3,000, that will come from the hotel motel tax too. Now that's coming out of.
Well. It would have to come out of the general fund.
Which may get some criticism from the auditors. Against.
That's correct.
City giving to a nonprofit organization. I guess this was my attempt to. Make this more honest according to the auditors. To keep it all under the hotel motel tax.
That's correct, but if, if we're only getting about $20,000 per year from hotel motel, you know. Let's do the math. It's, it's only $10,000.
Or thirteen.
So. I guess I propose. First and foremost is that I do wanna pass this resolutional support for financial commitment for Main Street or CDG, whatever they're called. And. And I'm open to, to having the discussion of giving them more money, but that's done at a budget time. That's not done, that's not done right now.
Okay, I get that.
As far as our hotel motel tax, if it's coming in at $20,000 for economic development, if you look at the money that we pay them. And I'm not saying that our money that we spend for said go and all those other ones are, is money well spent, but, but that's where that money comes from also.
I know.
Or should, so, so if there's $20,000 and we're already giving them ten and we give Sevco six thousand or four thousand or whatever.
Twenty five hundred to my kid.
Yeah, there may not be a hell of a lot left if that, if that's where we're thinking it's all coming out of, we're just that fund.
Okay, so here's my compromise. What forever, trees forever?
Three thousand, yeah, damn right.
Two thousand, but that wasn't supposed to come out of any, that was.
That was gonna come out of mass budget. Auditors don't have no problem with that.
Okay, at a minimum then we need to put $10,000 in this resolution.
Yes. Well, I don't.
Cause it says so in their contract.
That's what, that's what they need.
On down the line, it needs to have a dollar amount. It's, it's in the contract. If you read, it's way in there somewhere.
So could we put it in, could we change the contract to say that we, we commit that we're going to. To. At least maintain their funding. At minimum.
Um, I would put a dollar amount in this resolution.
Good.
State likes to have their.
So whoever makes, I haven't even got a motion yet, so I would like to make someone, have someone give me a motion. To approve the resolution. With the added language of. An annual. Minimum annual. Contribution of $10,000.
Oh, at one time it was, oh, at one time it was more than.
Yeah. That was huge.
We've been giving them ten for. See, I've been here for ten years, so.
Yeah.
And before that it was more than that.
Ramped down. Yeah.
I was just curious, trying not to make it more complicated. Well, I would say do a good job and another reason I was gonna make it more complicated is $10,000 five years ago. It's not $10,000.
Right.
So we're effectively getting less money.
I know.
It deserves more.
Hey guys, I'm not disagreeing that we shouldn't give them more money. I'm just saying today is not the day to have that budget.
I'm fine with today, but today we have to have a dollar amount in here because that's what. Contract says later on. Obtain a resolution of support.
The, the resolution must describe sources and amounts of funding for the program.
Correct.
In number eight.
Eight B.
So you have the sources being hotel motel.
You just need an amount. So can someone give me a resolution? I'd like it to say a minimum of $10,000 because.
I moved that we put in the blank that. Wants an amount that we put a minimum of $10,000.
I am.
So we'll add that to the wording before I sign that. Correct. This, I know my. Just before it says the source of funds.
I just want to make sure it comes back up. That's all I was saying, just to know it's Heidi or something, make it known that we don't forget every budget hits.
So I have a question. So all the funds that they get have to come from hotel, hotel tax too? Or?
With this nonprofit thing?
Think so.
Cause we never had that before. We already gave money before.
Leslie and I decided to put that in there this time because I'd like to start doing resolutions that actually say where the money's coming from. Because we always ask where the money's coming from.
Except that you're kind of pigeonholing yourself there because if we decide we're gonna give them fifteen or eighteen grand or something like that, we only have 20,000 in our, in our thing. Then we got Sevco and blah, 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 you know them.
Go ahead, Leslie.
All right, so the resolution I got from last year didn't have a dollar amount, but if you'll notice that last sentence and I added this. That the, um, the source of funds will, to support the West Branch Community Development Group will be from hotel motel tax and or general fund dollars.
And or, that's right.
And I put that and or in there because of that, but this is, this, this is a situation that we've heard when we went to IMF, a training two weeks ago. The auditors are looking at municipalities giving to nonprofits and according to the state code, you can't do that. So we did a little poking while we were in class and CDG says they're a nonprofit, so we're like, we get back, we better figure out where we're paying them.
Total contradiction terms there because we have to give to them and want to.
I'm just explaining what, this is what we do. We go to training, we hear these things and we come back and we're like, let's, let's do a little bit of research.
Isn't this Main Street and state?
Yeah, can I ask a question Leslie?
Right.
So that's stupid. That's crazy.
But this, but I said, we, we just looked at community development group and it says on their website they're a nonprofit, but again, we don't have access to all of our records when we're at trainings, we had to come back and ask.
We are a five oh one C three nonprofit, that's correct. But eighty percent of the Main Street programs are and, and I've never heard of this being an issue in other cities. So I would be happy to schedule a, a meeting with our Main Street Iowa staff this week and try to get some clarification about where that funding usually comes from.
The auditor brought this up and it's thrown a whole, all across the city.
Yeah.
Okay.
Except that.
Every time.
This is different than any other.
Yeah.
Nonprofit such as the Lions or.
It still doesn't, it still doesn't make sense because the hotel motel tax is, is the city's, city's tax money, just like everything else is.
And, and there are specific sources you can use the hotel motel tax. So my guess is you're probably correct that the hotel motel tax statute allows.
Right.
But.
Can you use it?
But there are, you know, entities that, you know, give, you know. Pay entry, stuff like that. So they're questioning all that.
So that's what we were told in training and then after I sent out the agenda, I did get a call from Adam CoCo questioning the same thing because he's getting ready to go through an audit at. Carner and raised, they're, they're the same issues are raised with them. He wanted to know what our audit was and I told him it's not scheduled yet, but it's tentatively supposed to be in January and I said, we've already raised the same questions ourselves, Heidi and I. I'm doing a little bit more research. I saw that when I was looking for the state code that. A couple of things popped up on Google and one was another city who has a motel tax, hotel motel tax in their code. So I printed it off, I showed it to Kevin, Kevin sent me Cora bills, so I got this from Iowa codifications today, we're putting it in our code and this is just standard language from the code. So we'll have something in our code that says how we're going, how we can spend the money. So we have something to start with, but it's pretty. It just says use of revenues. It says at least fifty percent of the revenue derived from the local hotel and motel tax shall be spent for the acquisition of sites or, or constructing any. I, I can pass this around. I just got this today.
That's where the state code says you can use the money for, so.
So for the carriage ride. Can we work around it where it would?
That's why I was trying to get it inserted into this. Because the carriage rides.
But, but, but the auditor, and I read the auditors, they had a question and answer for a bunch of counties with ISAC. One of the things if, if you have, if, if the nonprofit is doing something for the governmental entity that thinks government only can run themselves and you're just repaying them for doing something that the governmental entity could do. Then, then it's okay. You just have to have a contract that shows why you're, what they're getting paid for. So like if the city could say, I'm gonna, for my Christmas past, I'm going to run the carriage rides and pay for marcelles. Instead we have an agreement with somebody else to pay for them, but they're doing that on our behalf. So you have a contract that, that meets the expectation of the auditor.
Yeah.
It doesn't, they said as long as it's not, they said I'm nonprofits, but if they're, if they're doing something on behalf of the government agency, then it's okay.
So if the Lions would do carriage rides.
You gotta.
For the Kiwanis.
Well, truly Roger, even CDG does do the carriage rides and all of the events that we coordinate on behalf of economic development for the city.
Yeah.
So that's in the contract.
So we just need to have it in the contract and I, and one of the question and answer from the auditor said that was okay.
All right, let's, we're killing this today.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
A motion.
Jody approved with the $10,000 inserted. Any other discussion? Let's go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yeah.
Sexton?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
All right, now let's talk about carriage rides. Resolution twenty forty-five approving the contributions to a Christmas past event for the purpose of horse drawn carriage rides. Need a motion.
To move.
Um. In the past, we gave $3,000 in talking with Heidi. That fund that it came out of only has $5,000 in it. Which. Which we often use a major portion of that to put up the lights. The Christmas lights on. That can cost us two or three thousand a year. So. Three thousand was stretching that.
That we put our own lights on.
Yeah, so.
We do. We, we replaced light bulbs, which are very expensive. We rent a lift.
We had one.
We ran a lift. To go up and down the street, to put them up, we rented again to take them down. Um, that all goes into this community development fund. Is that what it's coming out?
That's correct.
Community Development Fund.
Yes.
What's that?
Did we not put enough in it to begin with?
No, we don't. We don't, we don't put enough money in that particular slot. We don't. It should be another. Go ahead.
And, and, and again.
Next, when the budget time comes.
When budget time comes for FY twenty-three, yes, we've identified some areas that are a little bit low, some are a little bit high. I'm going back to hotel motel tax. We've been collecting it for almost three years and we've not spent any money out of it. No money was ever budgeted to take out of it, so we got an excess sitting there and we got, you know. Not so much money sitting over here. So yes, so the budget will be looked at a little bit more closely. Some things will have to be changed. But yes, right now, and that same way with when you think about like trees forever, you know, we, we tend to always wanna go to the same fund. Well, that fund only has a little bit of money in it, so we have to go somewhere else. So we're trying to be a little bit better about, you know, like Colton always asks, okay, how are we gonna pay for it? Great idea. We'll tell you where we're gonna pay for it.
So the $50,000 that's sitting there is in a fund that wasn't budgeted, so we couldn't, we couldn't spend it even if we wanted to unless we did a budget.
That's correct. So we're probably having to do a budget amendment anyway. That's on the list.
So would it be out of the question to take $5,000 out of that and put in our. Put in our community development thing so we can cover the things we need to cover? And just do a budget.
Tourist related, you're putting lights up.
Well. There's, there's more things that CDG would love to do such as promotions that they would love to do. They don't have the money.
Well, this is.
Some of that could come out of, maybe we should pay for some of that promotions.
That's fine, but this is about the lights.
This is about the lights and the.
All right, yes, I agree with you. I think we all.
Okay, we're trying to figure out. So we're only gonna put 2,000 on this resolution because we can't afford to take more than that out and they need more than 2,000. They would love to have three. That's what we're giving the last.
Typically give three and I agree with three.
So.
Like Colton said, can we give them, then that's to give them three and then just take 2,000 more out of the 50,000 we got sitting there and just do a budget and then.
Amend our budget.
Next, next meeting. So we can give them three this meeting and then just add more for the Christmas lights.
We don't even have to do it next meeting. Could we do just an inter fund loan, just loan ourselves $2,000 from something and put it into there and then we'll square it all up. And then we'll square it all up when we do our budget amendments.
This would all have to be a budget amendment, I don't know about a interfund loan, but you know, we can definitely do that. But like I said, in the last five years, um it's always been five thousand dollars.
I just can't, I just can't see how we have a four million dollar budget and the two, two thousand dollars is gonna create all this. We can somehow flow ourselves two thousand dollars.
No, we can, Colton, it's just the fact that we have to amend it because five thousand dollars is the whole shebang that we have for that. Um that that bucket, if you will, I mean, we can definitely do it, we just have to amend the budget.
But we just draw this money out of the hotel motel tax instead of. This uh.
That money hasn't been budgeted, so you can't.
Whether we give them three now and then move that money out of there in there.
I'd love to give them three now, that's, that's half of the carriage rides, it's probably less than that.
Typically, we've given them three, we we just amended to give them three and then the next meeting we just take money out of hotel motel tax. Put it in there for the lights and then do a budget amendment. I don't think we, because it sounds like we have to do a budget.
We'll give them three and then figure out what the actual tickets that come in for the for the lights actually is. I mean, maybe there's not as many light bulbs burned out this year.
Yeah.
I know the left's like fault, you know, six hundred bucks or something like that for a week or something like that, I mean, it's. So what am I supposed to change?
Are you okay with three, okay with three in sense?
Um I'd like to change the, change the motion from two thousand to three thousand. I'd like to continue our funding as we have always done.
I second that, okay, we're gonna vote on that little amendment to the resolution. Okay, we have a motion to move from two thousand to three thousand dollars. Um let's vote on that little item, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Alright, so now the uh. The resolution before us will will have the dollar amount of three thousand dollars instead of two thousand dollars. Is there any more discussion on that resolution? Okay, let's vote on the whole thing.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Alright, thank you guys.
The attempt of letting us know a bucket. Good, even though I made this. I do appreciate it, so if Heidi's listening, I do appreciate him, Leslie.
In the resolution.
Yes, I do appreciate that, even if I made this kind of a headache, I'd rather have these headaches and know about it than not. Yes, it's exciting.
Well, that helps.
At least it's nice to know when we have something coming that we're gonna do, but it may not be caught off.
Okay, now we are at the point of our meeting where yes means no, so resolution twenty forty-six. Of whether Axion Windpower North America LLC should be rebated a portion of tax income of revenue.
So moved.
So that's a motion to approve the tax rebate.
Yes, correct. Is a motion, the resolution. Is in the affirmative, meaning a yes means you want to appropriate the amount of money.
So if I were voting, which I don't vote.
No, we we changed that, so we didn't have that.
No means you're not.
I would recommend a no vote myself. Okay, so it's not, it's not like it's a confusing message.
No, we've changed that.
So now no means no. Yeah, we know, we changed it.
No means no, they will not get anything. Correct. Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
No.
Goodweiler?
No.
Stulman?
No.
Sexton?
No.
Resolution twenty forty-seven, accepting and approving the city street finance report for fiscal year twenty-one. Motion please.
So moved.
Jody. This is a formality, we're not gonna change anything. Um Heidi's got through her first street report, street finance report. Um she wants to present it to us here.
Good, because I don't remember ever.
No, we do it every year.
Yeah.
Just one of those things we use, it's maybe you're not as format.
Not sure I've seen it this clear before.
Usually it's one page in there.
So the DOT must have got their stuff together.
It is, it is a new um format that started. Uh for this, well, this last fiscal year, so you know, I'm sure you guys know this, but this, you know, records the financial activity for the last fiscal year. Um FY twenty-one, which is July first, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Um and as you can see, the report includes expenses, revenue, bonds, loans, equipment, anything that is associated with um streets and roads.
So I'm looking at the very last bottom right hand corner of one point one eight six million. Is that what we spent on our streets portion?
That's correct, that's uh general funds and uh road tax use.
Okay, you got a motion to approve?
But doesn't that in?
Oh, sorry.
Doesn't this also include um College Street Bridge?
It does.
Didn't leave any more than that?
We didn't. I guess we got, we did. One point seven seven five four four nine three.
They say the seven seventy. It's a separate tab of street projects.
Yep.
There's one for equipment as well.
Alright.
Is that how we ended up in the hole? For our beginning balance? Said we were two hundred and forty seven thousand dollars in the hole for a beginning balance.
You might be waiting for a TIF payment.
That was the cap, yeah, I think.
To ourselves.
Can we do a hundred and twenty thousand each? And for two years to make that up?
And we may not have got the final money from the bridge for the DOT yet, at that point. So I think Gordon was waiting for eighty thousand bucks.
Now we're. That's just thirty-five.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's vote on this, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Okay, um Johnson County Refugees is being. Sold. We have before us, I need a mo. I need a motion to approve this assignment um that Steve has asked us to approve. I need a motion to approve the assignment agreement with Johnson County Refugees for residential solid waste collection. Get a second.
One second.
Ask and answer any questions.
So where's this Lake Shore, I don't, I believe it's Chicago, Chicago area.
So he said, um we have a five year contract?
Yeah.
Four now, that that'll be honored completely, he's told us.
They have to.
Steve him, yeah, Steve himself will stay on.
For an. Undetermined amount of time.
From south, near the beach. He's been thinking about selling for a short while and they've talked him into it. So I got a motion in a second to approve this agreement, so let's go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
And if the sale doesn't go through, this is no avoiding. Um that ends our regular portion of our meeting tonight. Um city staff reports, anyone? Let's start with uh Chief Hannah. Hearing none, Nick Schuman. Heidi, Heidi, anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Looks like Matt, Matt, you wanna say something?
Sure, um we'll be taking a tree down on Main Street this week. It's scheduled to come down on Wednesday, we've been trying to get this down for the last. Month or month and a half and everything keeps falling apart, but it should be coming down on Wednesday, we'll have power shut off to a few homes, but. Um aside from that, it should be down and cleaned up by lunchtime and the street open back up, we'll have a. Detour similar to hometown days, not quite as intensive, but similar. Other than that, we start on the Casey's lot, um we should be pouring some of the parking this week. And we'll get the sidewalks started next week. Um the north end of it, I think we are actually gonna be able to hook on to. The sidewalk that's there at the house to the north of of there. Um so sidewalk will actually go to somewhere instead of just ending at the property. I do have to call that property owner and just. Talk with her a little bit about that and see what we can do there to make that happen, so, but the plan now is to get that sidewalk connected there.
Right?
I guess that's.
Thank you, Matt.
So we got noticed that we were selected for the community visioning program and um we're gonna do a, tomorrow night's gonna be a kickoff, a Zoom. Kickoff and then the nineteenth um an event in Ames. So we're kind of excited to get started on that, I think that's a great program that will help. All of us figure out what the community wants moving forward and so maybe less time can be spent. Determining what should happen with the vacant parking lot someday.
So she's gonna come to Thursday evenings, the park and rec meeting and chat with us. About whatever, we'll see what happens.
That's somebody different.
That's Key Bio Beautiful.
Yes.
That's right.
Different programs, different. But we have a lot of things happening with this.
So what's this Zoom kickoff kickoff meeting, is it like the statewide one?
Well, there were the different times, so we signed up for the the one time, I really don't know, I'm gonna be honest, I have never.
West Branch is tomorrow night.
Well, yeah, we're doing tomorrow night and um I think it'll probably be an introduction to the program, I talked with Paige, our coordinator, and hopefully we'll be able to talk about. What dates moving forward work for everybody to get together and meet. This, oh, it's an hour and a half.
Hour and a half?
That's what.
Do we have to stay for the whole thing?
Nope, I can give you, I I will, I'll do up some notes and kind of give you the. The or the detailed notes after that, and I'll keep council updated too, because this is a good, this is a big thing.
Alright, thank you, Melissa.
Melissa, have a question on the park, Tubby Park Lights?
Yes, they are on, I've heard lots of comments, they're on an automatic timer, so so they.
Are they being used?
They are, and part of it was that I did have a lot of requests from residents for that. Or turning them on at night or in the morning, whether it be calls from pickleball, people playing pickleball or wanting to walk or things like that. So we put them on a timer, we're giving a shot to encourage outdoor recreation as long as possible. Um and it's sa- it's saving me time right now from having to go flip them on um and flip them off. So they are on an automatic timer.
How long do you think you're gonna do that?
I said through the beginning of December or until it gets, if the weather makes it slick, that like the trail can't be walked, then then we shut it down. I arrange it through Musco, so they can remotely connect, so we set up the system, um. I think I have it set right now for, I changed it a little bit, um. The request I actually got was about four thirty in the morning, so let's, let's be honest with what I.
Seriously, people want you to turn all them lights on so they can walk?
Yes, well, and it's part of it for a safety thing, you know, it we're lighting it and.
So what we need to do is get trail lights.
Or show, tell, they sell these little headlight things you put on your head, a little flashlight?
We're just trying it, we're trying it this year and then we'll see where it goes from there.
She got a request.
I got a lot of requests.
Seems to me it's a pretty expensive.
Yes. Yep, no, that is an option and we we can set it up in the same way I can shut them down, you know what I mean remotely, so that's.
Do we know how much?
So, so with. So with this.
Go ahead, Melissa.
So with this system, while we're trying it, we'll be able to do a really good cap cost analysis. With the lights on for that month, because I can do a printed out report and without having that data, I really can't, can't do that, so that is. That's why we're trying it this year to see if it's worth, see if it's worthwhile, and if it's not, then we we discontinue. We have the resource.
My question would be, is anybody actually?
There you go.
Checking to see if anybody's using.
How many people are actually using?
Well, I know how many people were using it before. Well, the group that was that requested.
They're out there.
Was using it, and like I said, in the evenings, well, it's kind of cold right now, but between Jamie and I, we did have to go turn it on pickleball for pickleball in the evening, so.
That's, that's another subject that. It seems to be, there's a lot more use of the pickleball than the the ball diamond, so. We should probably think about getting some lights just for the pickleball, so that all the lights don't have to be on just to play pickleball, I agree.
And that's one of the things we're talking about on Thursday when we're talking about different brand opportunities, so. So we're on it, we know what we need now.
That's been a hit, we we dropped the ball there, we just dropped it. Melissa knew, she knew.
I. A lot hard for the pickleball court, so.
I'm sure they added two more.
There is, there, I do get a lot of requests for additional pickleball courts, a lot. I I don't think there's one there unless we did that other, but potentially Woxie. Be a spot, that would be a big enough.
There you go.
Area in a different location so that. Yeah, we have space there that we could do that, and that would probably meet the flood requirements because it would be a flood.
I was gonna say, yeah, because if flooded.
Yep. Wouldn't be like a building that would lock it.
Don't the fences have to be collapsible or something like that?
There's some requirements there. Anyway, so trying it out, they're on a timer, I have checked multiple times and the timer is working.
So when you, when you get that report of what it's costing for those lights, please let us know.
Absolutely, yep.
Alright, so uh. Mayor and council, I have one comment, we need to talk about the brush pile. So. Right now it is closed, it's closed because. It it got full. We spent a lot of money chipping from the Duray Show and we just did another eight thousand dollar chipping. Leslie's and Heidi, they're getting a lot of abuse of people coming in. And wanting to know why it's not open. I mean, it's a really great service that we have, that when you take it away, then people start complaining. I mean, it's a really great service that we have, that when you take it away, then people start complaining.
Is it still open to a key?
Keys are just a pain in the butt, because people either don't bring it back or they They'll take the lock, I stole them. Yeah, stole the lock.
If you got the key, just we'll take the lock with it. Don't we know?
Maybe they just set it on their tailgate. But, um,
Don't sign, sign to get a key and still then bring them back. And we notify them?
Yep, yeah, in my spare time, I will send them, or call them and say, hey, you don't haven't returned your key, in fact, I think there might be somebody here who has not returned a key. Or lost a key, there's been keys that have been lost, it's. I might be someone who's not here anymore, or not here today. But there, there's several people in town that take keys and they'll, they mean to bring them back and they don't, and we tell them to put them in the drop box and they still don't.
So now it's, you're telling people just throw it overboard, well.
I'm telling them to walk it.
They're not quite making it, it's in the ditch.
And they're not doing that, they're mad because either someone else has already dumped it in the walkway.
Yeah.
They're mad because they couldn't drive it in, so they're putting it in the ditch, they're putting it in the walkway, they're putting it everywhere, and then they just like to holler at us because they think that we should let them in there.
I threw mine over the edge. I threw it over the, no, into the pile.
So I think we have a choice, we could just stay as is. Maybe we open it for the rest, for through the month of November. And then lock it up for the winter. I don't know, what, what are you guys' thoughts? We need to find another or burn pile, we need to talk to them.
I think it needs to be open personally. I use it a lot.
I use it a lot, I use it a couple of times a year and, of course, I needed to use it when I cleaned up my fall cleanup.
And the unfortunate part about the, that I find is every time I go up there, people are just, I don't know if they're just lazy or what, but they like to just pull off the gravel and drop their stuff, the pile is fifty feet away.
Yeah.
You try to chuck it as far as you can and.
No, when I go back up to it, I back all the way up to the pile. I mean, unless it's too muddy. Yeah, or I have to go over, I'm clumsy to get them.
Right.
I tore a brake line off doing that, I didn't turn this city nothing before, so I didn't.
But it's a service that we provide and not one that we have to provide.
It's a pretty popular service.
Well, yeah, you kind of do have to provide it, because if you don't, there's just gonna be piles of brush showing up places where they should. Well, and that's, that's part of why we have it is because.
I know, that's what I meant, that's the whole point of it.
Want to, want to open it up for the month? Matt, put in your two cents, I've heard what you had to say, but go ahead.
Uh, we originally closed it just to save space so that if we had city trees that needed taken down or for people to clean up their gardens and stuff to throw it out because we're getting so much stuff that wasn't, like huge amounts of trees. And basically, if we can open it up, I'm totally fine with it. It's gonna be, it'll be full by the time we hit December and close it up, so pretty much we're doing yard waste until December third, leaf pickup until December third. And then we're thinking we'd lock it back up if we were gonna open it up for the month. If that works for all of you.
Lock it for the winter?
Yeah, and then, so the wastewater plant will then get bid out. Um, when they start moving dirt, we're basically gonna lose that. So I don't, I'm honestly not sure what we're gonna do in the spring for a brush pile. Because that'll all have to be chipped and be hauled off and that whole area will just be I think it's gonna be basically off limits for anything like that. Um, the area to the north is not gonna be completed and usable, I don't think, over next summer, so we just have to figure someplace else out to put it at least for next year. Which we could use.
Do we own all the way down to the creek?
No. No, that's, that's Anderson's down there. Um, we do own four acres up around the South Water Tower. And I don't want to say that we could use it, but we could use it, we currently, that's where our concrete and dirt and any contractor working in town or water main work or anything, that's where all that goes to. We could put it there for a year, but it would probably need cleaned back up and hauled off site after the wastewater plant was done. So that would be an added expense, but that's without finding another place to put it. I don't see what our other options gonna be.
So, so Matt, as far as the mulch goes, has anybody talked to you about getting, about how that, those, uh, lagoons get built? That Sager system, because I hold tons and tons and tons of mulch in Tipton.
Yeah, we'll, we'll lose or use a lot of that mulch, I think, on those. So moving that and piling it up, I mean, it'll be usable and further down the line, we'll need more mulch in order to keep covering those, because that mulch will break down every year and we'll have to keep putting it on. How much of that pile, I, I really don't know.
Okay, so I'm kind of hearing, let's open it for the month of November.
Yeah. Yep, sorry, I probably talked a little too much, but.
Maybe every two months, we open it for a couple of weeks or something.
Is there?
I mean, during, during the winter, we rarely get anybody taking anything out unless we get an ice storm. And that's just an odd event, that if it happens, we'll, we'll open it back up, but pretty much once we get in December and all the leaves have dropped, people have cleaned up all their gardens, that should take care of most everyone.
We thought about getting any cameras out there?
Okay, let's open it up for the month of November, I think we just made a decision.
Hey?
Um, during business hours or like seven to, when you guys go home, go up and lock it or?
That's what I.
I get, I get a lot of people though that want to use it on the weekends or wanna, they give me a call and wanna, want me to open it at five thirty or whatever at night. I mean, if you're gonna open it all day, just open it, let it go for the month and we'll clean it up.
So, so what if we went to the northwest corner? And dug a big hole and burn it? Why can't we burn it in the northwest corner? That's far enough away, it wouldn't be sucked into the NG.
It'd be the interstate then, would be damaging.
You mean the northwest corner?
And we're, uh, we're going against our own ordinance of no burning in the city limits.
That's where some of the criticism came from, from burning our own
Yeah.
trash pile. Okay, I think that's our decision, man. Keep it open.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have, anybody, anything else?
Roger, I was going to do a quick update on the Cedar Johnson Herbert Hoover intersection.
Yeah, please.
I spoke with Neil after our last meeting and let him know that we wanted to move forward with, um, having that roundabout. They will be working with Anderson Bogart to do the design. We are supposed to have a meeting at nine o'clock on Thursday morning to try to get things coordinated, so we start off on the right foot with the design. Go over what they've done so far and, and provide them with any comments so that we don't have this back and forth and run up the engineering costs on them trying to come up with this, a certain layout and then us reviewing and making changes to it, so. I had proposed Neil that we do a Zoom meeting and Matt's going to sit on, on that as well. And that'll be with, uh, Johnson County, Anderson Bogart, us and the city. So we can provide a little bit better direction to them as far as what our preferences are. And, uh, try to work with them, maybe every other week, just to go through what they've got and try to steer it in the right direction. So that's the path that we're moving forward, they provided an updated twenty-eight E, Kevin has, uh, seen that, I've looked at it as well, we've provided comments and Neil has that going to the ci- the county attorney for preliminary review, once we get through that, we should be able to come back and have everybody sign that.
Do you want one of us to sit in on that meeting Thursday morning?
Yeah, if you want to sit in, that would be great, it's nine o'clock and I can send you the Zoom link.
Anybody else want to sit in on that? Send me the link.
Okay.
It's gonna be really cold that one. Alright, thank you, Dave. Any motion to adjourn, is anybody else has anything else? Motion someone?
So move.
Jerry, all's a favor, say aye.